Good evening, we're going to start the meeting. I'd like to welcome you all, and I appreciate your coming out this evening. This is a joint commission meeting. It's a special meeting on Thursday, February 18, 2016, and it's a special joint meeting of the following commissions. The Commission on the Use of Publicly Owned Property, the Conservation Commission, the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission, Economic Development Commission, Emergency Medical Services Commission, Fire and Human Services Commission, Human Services Commission, Library Commission, Police Commission, Recreation Commission, and Woodbridge Board of Education. I want to thank the chairs of all the commissions for helping us make this possible. As we've been going through the information about the Country Club of Woodbridge, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finanz have been hearing updates over the last few months so that we can all start with a common basis of information. And we thought it was very important that the other commissions hear this information. In fact, we've had requests to come to the different boards. And in speaking with the Information Commission, and actually Bob Joe had a good suggestion that we bring the commissions together rather than have 10 separate presentations. So we picked two dates so that people will have access to be here and hear the updates. And I think I could say everything, not just about everything that you will hear tonight is information that's already been presented to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finanz. And we think it's very important that all of you board members hear this. To some extent, you are all ambassadors of the town, and you need to know the facts as people speak with you. What we'd like to do tonight is, after we present this, hear from you about other information that you think is important, and other questions that perhaps you've heard around town that people are asking. And all of this is to put together a base of facts so that we can have public forums where all residents of town can come together and hear what's going on at the Country Club and be very well informed. Because if you take nothing else away from tonight, I want to remind everyone that town property cannot be sold except by a vote by the voters of Woodbridge. And I think it's incumbent, certainly upon me and upon all of us, to do everything we can to be sure that we have well-informed voters when they come out to make that decision. Again, I did want to say how important that is. You know, we at Town Hall live and breathe this issue sometimes 24/7, as well as other issues. And we forget that people who are not as involved don't really follow all the details all the time. And in fact, even this week, Tony had a call from someone who thought that the Board of Selectmen this week was going to approve the sale of the property. And I just want to say again to all of you, please, remind your friends and your neighbors that nothing can happen like that unless the residents come out and approve it. So we'll go through the PowerPoint now. Tony and I will switch off doing different parts of it. And I think it would be best if you can hold your questions to the end unless there's something that's not clear. I don't know Puah exactly how the sound system works, and what I want to make sure is that if you ask questions and they're not clear to Puah, that we will be sure to write them down so that we can get back to you with the answers to any questions. So this is the town of Woodbridge, and in case you don't know, the yellow area there is located the Country Club for you. And here's a better look at the Country Club property. It's about 150 acres. This timeline event is very familiar to some people, not as much to others. Back in May of 2009, after the Country Club property became available, the town meeting approved the purchase of the property for about $7 million. The long-term options that were presented at the annual town meeting by the Board of Selectmen were that the town lease all of the golf course operations to a third party, that the town operate the golf course and hire a third party to run day-to-day operations, that the town sell all or part of the property for controlled development, or some combination of the above. So that was...
Next time you turn your head, you lose the microphone.
You can't hear me?
Yes, so either the microphone has to follow you or you have to follow the microphone.
Okay, I have to see and... Okay, thank you. So after purchasing the property, the Board of Selectmen looked into long-term plans for what to do with it. I think there was time pressure. I was not there at the time, but it needed to be decided quickly and the town approved the purchase. But then the Selectmen wanted to figure out what to do with the property for the long term. And they issued an RFP for a long-term lease or purchase of the property. There was only one response at that time. It was MDM Golf, that was Mr. Manchetti, and he had been operating it on a short-term basis until this RFP could go out. And since he was the only bidder at that time, the town continued that short-term operation. In August, the town again went out for a long-term plan. This was the second attempt. And the town issued an expression of interest for potential developments of active adults, that's over 55, I would say, people over 55, on 17 acres. And it's the 17 acres along Woodfield Road, if you're familiar with the property. It's a wooded, kind of rocky area, not at all interfering with the golf course. There were two responses, and the Board of Selectmen felt that the Toll Brothers was the preferable one. And Toll did offer to purchase 17 acres for $2.3 million and build 58 townhomes that would be occupied by over 55 residents. The residents turned down that proposal. Again, here's another opportunity to remind you, it's up to the residents. It was turned down, I believe in a two-to-one vote against that proposal for active senior In December, and shortly after that, of 2011, the contract with MDM was over, and the town chose not to renew that contract, in part because MDM owed money to the town and was behind in its payments. So once that ended, the town issued an RFP for management of the CCW and received five proposals. After going through those, the Board of Selectmen chose Billy Casper Golf to manage the Country Club, and I believe that was a three-year contract they entered at that time. So in March of 2012, Billy Casper began management of the facility on behalf of the town. And when I came into office in 2013, the very big topic of conversation was the operating losses at the Country Club. And under the contract in effect at that time, the town took the risk of loss. We also had the potential upside of gains, but there were hundreds of thousands of dollars of losses, and people were very concerned. I can assure you, being new to this job, it kept me up many a night thinking how to handle that. And so one of my top priorities was to meet with Billy Casper Golf, which I did, to renegotiate the contract. And from that time forward, it was Billy Casper that was taking the risk on the Country Club, and we capped our liability at certain expenses. So that was the renegotiation of the contract. Then in February of 2014, we tried our third attempt for a long-term plan. The town had hired the consultants My Lon and Nick Room to work on our plan of conservation and development. And we worked out with My Lon and Nick Room that they would do a parallel study of the Country Club so that it could move along perhaps at a faster pace, not wait for the full plan to be completed so that we could have some guidelines where to go with the Country Club. Interestingly, My Lon and Nick Room concluded that the best use for the town at this time would be to keep the pool and the golf operations, but look at the active adult housing on 31 acres along Woodfield Road. So based on that, other discussions, there were people who thought there should be other options for the town, we issued an RFP to either come up with that development, which was very similar to that original Toll development on the 31 acres of Woodfield Road, or to present any other proposals for the property that were in keeping with the rural and residential nature of the town. We said it could include golf or not, if it be an 18-hole golf course, nine-hole golf course, no golf. And we really wanted to open it up to creative ideas for the property. We received only two responses to that RFP. And one was the Rose Company, the other was Billy Casper Golf. The Rose proposal was very interesting. I'm sorry, it was Rose and Toll for this. Oh, Billy Casper, I'm sorry, it was Rose and Toll. And the Rose proposal, while interesting, certainly in the first year, would have been a financial negative for the town. They actually wanted us to put more money in than we would be getting out of it. But I had put together an ad hoc committee to review the proposals. This has been the town practice in the past, where we do RFPs, we have a committee assess them. The committee was put together before I knew there'd only be two proposals, but they did, and they recommended that we take a look at the Toll proposal. They thought that was a better one. Subsequently, Rhodes actually withdrew their proposal, so once again, we only had one proposal to look at. The Toll proposal that came in at that time is really no longer on the table, not because it's been withdrawn by Toll, but the Board of Selectmen have concluded that it's about 170 housing units, and there's consensus on the board that that is just too many units that the town would not welcome that. But I did want to just point out to you that the offer was for $7.5 million, which financially would have been a great benefit to the town and ongoing revenues. But again, when you balance the number of houses and the financials, it just doesn't look viable for the town. So I don't know how well you can see this chart, and I do want to say at this point that all of this material is available on the website. So you can, you know, we can remember all the details, and I'm sorry if it's not really clear, but you will see it on the website. And these were options that we looked at at the Board of Selectmen, but the only ones that are still being talked about are C, E, and F. So I'll just tell you briefly what those are. C and E are options that were created by Toll in response to requests from Selectmen. And I'm assuming it's clear these were Selectmen on both sides of the aisle. This was different requests from different people on the board. And one was to do market-rate, single-family homes on one and a half acres. It's the zoning that would otherwise apply in the neighborhood. It would be for 51 homes, these would be large homes, in the $600,000 to $800,000 range. And Toll was proposing to pay $3.5 million, and estimated that annual taxes when complete would be $950,000. As you'll see on the next slide, the net revenue to the town, however, would be about a negative $450,000. That's a rough estimate that we looked at, and that's largely because with those large homes, it would have an impact on our schools, and it's education that is very expensive there. Option E would be for senior active adult housing. This is for 69 units, priced from the mid-400s to mid-500s. This proposal is for all detached homes. If there were some connected townhomes, it could be less expensive in that option. And the suggested purchase price from Toll, again, this is, we have not negotiated any of these details with him, would be a little over $3 million. Those estimated annual taxes were $900,000. The net impact on the town, in this case, would be approximately a positive $500,000 because with over 55 housing, you don't impact the schools, and it's financially advantageous for the town. And then the option F was to have the property be open space. And in discussing with Board of Selectmen what that means, obviously there were many different assumptions you can make about what constitutes open space. And in this case, we presumed that the land would be in a natural state, that we would demolish the clubhouse and other outbuildings, remove the pool, complete the environmental remediation, and basically make the property truly open space with some walking trails, perhaps some bike trails, but merely to say this is going to be an open space asset of the town. There are all kinds of iterations that we could do to look at that open space option. It could be open space and keep the pool, or open space and keep the tennis courts, but it was just to get something out there that we could be looking at. I don't recall the net financial impact, if you go to the next slide. The net financial impact on open space would be about a negative $550,000 because we wouldn't be getting any money in for selling the property and reducing the debt. And of course, we wouldn't have any revenue from that. I'm going to turn it over to Tony now to talk about some of the financial details.
Can we go back to the last slide? The open space plan is a negative $550 for the town per year?
Essentially, the main drivers of the cost on that are the continuing to purchase, pay the debt service on the property, and the costs that are required to create the, as indicated in the previous slide, demolition and some other costs that we would incur upfront to create the open space. So that's the, essentially, the majority of that is debt service.
So Tony, where does the $1.5 on the previous slide, how does that fall in there?
So the $5.50 is essentially the debt service for the club, which is roughly $410,000 or thereabouts. And then the remainder, $100,000 or so, would be the $1.5 million here, that's over $20 year on addition.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
The open space, I don't see anything if you left it strictly as a golf course, what the negative figure would be? And you kept the pool and the golf course.
Right, so the, good point, the assumptions on this open space fiscal impact are on the previous screen. You probably can't see the footnote, but it says, "Open space presumes the land is left in natural state, concludes demolition of the clubhouse, other outbuildings, removal of the pool, environmental remediation, and other costs." The cost of leaving that, it's certainly another way we can look at it and we could So the town issued $7 million for the purchase of the Country Club. It's essentially the purchase of $6.9 million in closing costs. The, I've heard that short-term taxable notes were issued for $7 million in 2010, and we still have notes on the property. The notes are renewed annually with a principal payment beginning in '13, and every year the town pays $350,000 in principal plus interest. Current balance of the notes is $5.6 million. And the notes were issued to provide flexibility to the town for the contemplated sale of all or part of the property. At some point, the town has to issue permanent financing with bonds that will have a fixed rate for the life of the remaining maturity of the bonds. The notes are temporary financing, and there are no rate changes annually. So for instance, the current notes that we have outstanding are matured in July. So in July, then we either have to issue permanent financing to, because the notes are maturing, or issue notes again. But every time we issue, reissue notes, we have to pay $350,000, or issue, essentially we issue $350,000 less in notes because we have that obligation.
So what's the percentage?
For interest?
Yeah.
Yes, it varies each year. One year it was 0.3%. The first year we did it was, I think we're on 0.7%, all over 1%. And these are taxable rates. Because of the nature of the property and the potential future of the property, the bond council has determined that the notes would be taxable at this time. So, so they're just not, no, I mean...
Do we have a time period? I'm sorry, is there a time period for permanent financing?
You have to issue permanent financing after 10 years.
10 years?
Yeah. So there's just a few more years left.
While we're on the topic, estimate the cost of permanent financing, is that comparable?
Permanent financing is a lot more expensive than temporary financing because you pay a lot more issuance fees to the radiating seats and to the financial advisors and bond council. It's all a lot more expensive than temporary financing.
And Tony, is there also an issue, should we sell some of it?
Right, so that's the big issue with taxability, is if, should you sell a portion of it, then it changes the taxable nature of the bonds, and therefore, you would have to go through a very lengthy and expensive process to sort of unwind that process. And if, so for instance, we issued tax-exempt bonds, and in a few years, there was a piece of us that was sold to an entity for a taxable purpose. So we would have to unwind, it would be a complex process we would have to, which I'm not an expert, but we would need many experts to help us figure that out. And so that's part of the major reason why they were still notes outstanding. So let me give you an idea of the net cost to the town since the inception of the Country Club. I keep a record of this every year. And the net total expenditures that the town has paid, this includes the purchase price, closing costs, borrowing costs, professional services, clubhouse costs, payments to Casper, those years where we had expenditures to run the course ourselves, anything that would be an expense to the town is $11.8 million. We have received revenues since that time, $2.7 million in revenues, mostly from either the years when the town ran the golf course, which was 2012, 2013. Also, there's some minor self-town release, not very much, and pool fees are in that category, and also when we receive payments from MDM Golf. So those are the major items in the revenue section of that calculation. And so the net cost to the town would be a little over $9 million. And one good question that came up was, what would the cost be if you minus out the purchase cost and the borrowing costs?
... Route 113, River Avenue, and Easton Center Road.
So we put a slide together to show that information, which is the $9 million net cost of the town, but if you minus out the purchase and closing costs and borrowing costs, and borrowing costs essentially is the interest in the cost addition that would make up that counter, right? It's $1.68 million. And most of that happened in the years where, it's a little over a million dollars, if it happened in the years where the town was running the course, 2012, 2013, 2014, until as I indicated, she renegotiated the contract.
Tony, just to confirm, that's basically the effort and the loss for the course?
The pool, the course, the whole entity, correct, the clubhouse, right.
You had, you said a million of that was...
A little, it was a little less, yeah, it was like $800,000 roughly.
For the first?
For the, it was the first portion of '12, '13, '14, there were those years where the town was running the course, it's like two and a half years. I don't have the exact figure.
So that's 600 for the last four years, six, 700 for the last, something like that?
It's mostly that, yeah, the rest of it's the last few years.
Tony, what might be useful is actually the graph.
I have, I actually got to an idea, I do have one that I drew, but just see that.
Question?
Mark that down if you can get that, sure.
Question?
You can see it by year, and it shows you a sort of pattern by year of the losses.
So if you take out the debt payment, what is the annual cost for running the club?
I don't think we can, you know, this is a special meeting, and there's no public comment, so I don't think we can take questions, but if you just stop by at the end of the meeting, we'll be glad to...
Okay, sorry, yeah, I have to... So to give you an idea of what the expenditures look like in our annual budget, put together this information just to give you an idea of how much it costs each year. In 2015, the cost for the, or the expense for the clubhouse and the golf course, which is the cost to upkeep the clubhouse, utilities maintenance, and the payments to Billy Casper Golf, are standard $10,000. The pool, expenditures on the pool is $114,000, which is mainly for personnel maintenance and some other utilities for the heat and water and stuff. And the debt service, interest and principal, is $407,000 that year. $332,000 that were expenditures in the town's budget, however, we did collect pool fees and golf revenues that year, $148,000. So the net expenditure in the budget that year was $684,000 in the fiscal year 15 budget or audit. So you can follow, you can follow the expenditures in our audit if you look at our audit.
We're all trying to observe this scene.
Sure, yeah. So if you look at our fiscal year audit, you can follow, if you look through it, you can see some of the expenditures. I just put them all in one place so that you can see them.
Also, just to remind you, all of these slides are on the website, so don't feel like this is the moment you have to take it down or remember it, it's all there.
And just to further give you another comparison, in the fiscal year '16, which is one which we already halfway drew, the budget had golf and clubhouse $280,000, and the pool was $127,000. And the debt, as you can see, debt went down, it was $388 from the previous year because our interest rates were lower that year. And so that's $795,000, and $135,000 in estimated pool and golf revenues for the year, that's an estimate, because we still have some time left. That's a total net expenses of $660,000. We're luckily, that we're in a low-interest rate environment, as you can see, for one year, to borrow, the time would be $5.6 million, is $38,000 in interest, so...
I get, back to that slide. So I think all of us, as we've looked at this over time, and it's changed, you know, I don't think if we're redoing the contract with Casper, because I think the, you know, power begins to haul that engine, okay? There's still loss, but at least predictable losses in that way. Obviously, the trend is going in a better way. I think seeing those slides in the yearly basis will be helpful. I think when we look at this though, at this slide, you're correct on how we said that's the right way to show. I think that the 380 for the debt service at this point in time, in terms of myself as resident member of the Recreation Commission, whether it's operating or it's open space, we have debt service and open space purchase, so it's there either way. So I think from looking at it from an operating cost, what do we lose, or how close are we getting to break even? There's another issue around this, which means even if we do get to break even, where does the capital deal with the other things with the clubhouse and the course and everything else that goes on, which is another larger issue. Just going back a little bit, when we're going through the 1-6 loss over the six years, in those revenues that we collected, were there revenues in there from, that we collected, lease income from MDM?
Yes, the first few years actually were, you look at the graph, the first few years were actually a positive.
Okay.
It's only until year three it was exonerated.
Okay, and in that regard, was it, is it the number that we actually collected in those numbers, or the number net, what we had to write off?
Oh, no, the what we actually collected, so it's, I didn't put it in what we had to write off, it's what we actually physically deposited into our account. The, as you just alluded to, there are, there's been some, which one, it sort of mentioned some of the capital, identified capital needs for the facility that has come up so far, either in discussions or in submissions. that has come up so far, either in discussions or in submissions. So, um, first is the, uh, construction of Woodbridge Commission for the, um, this year has submitted a total of four hundred thousand dollars in improvements for the course. Uh, and if you look at the capital budget this year, you'll see that it's a series of improvements recommended for, um, equipment replacements, rebuilding tees, surf and greens. Um, in discussions with Billy Casper Golf, they have indicated that beyond the short term, that we would probably, uh, need at least a million dollars in improvements for the course beyond the short term. Um, if, if, they can probably get to a lot more detail, and I could have got that, but I just thought it was helpful worth mentioning that there are potentially some, um, larger capital improvements in the future. The, um, pool, uh, also has some, uh, capital needs coming up. Um, one is the pool replexing, as recognition is, um, discussed, and, um, was fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars roughly, or am I correct? Uh, there's also a heater in the pool, which, um, if you stay with me, he does a great job of keeping that, um, together and making sure it works every year, but at some point, uh, that heater will need to be replaced most likely. So those are some of the items that have been identified so far. Uh, if you were actually the last, the last is the clubhouse. And, um, while they're not figures, hard figures with some of these options, um, lots of meetings, selected meeting, David Stein presented, of Silver Petrocellar presented three sort of ways to think about options for the clubhouse. Uh, one is to essentially mothball the clubhouse and just essentially secure the envelope to, um, to significantly slow down the deterioration so that decisions could be made in the future concerning the clubhouse. Uh, second is you can do general repairs and replacements of existing, uh, equipment to essentially repair some of the major items of the building, which would be repair and replace the canvals and electrical systems. And there are various, um, levels that you can do this, but those are some of the, um, some repairs and replacements that you could do once it's been a little more. Um, that doesn't get ready for a renovation if you want to use the space for something specific, but, um, you may have additional expenses for that, but those are some of the general repairs that would most likely need to be done. And, um, of course, you could either demolish, demolish the structure and/or build a new structure if that was the desire. So just sort of wanted to frame some of those for discussion, and in case there's any more information on any of those, we can get that for you.
What's the cost of the demo versus general repairs and?
So the, um, we don't have specific conditions, but rather initials from industry estimates. But the demo cost was a little over a million dollars, I think. Um, but there was, uh, there wasn't anything, um, specific. It's an accurate change if there's hazardous materials. The demolition, yeah, it was a little over a million dollars. The, uh, general repairs could vary widely depending on what you do. It's estimated it was three, three million dollars, four million dollars, but again, very significantly based on types of repairs that you do and the nature of those repairs. So, um, that was more just in sort of a industry estimate on how much a square foot cost it was, you know, I, I don't want to get sort of hung up on that figure because...
No, I understand that. But as a building six now, deteriorating day after day.
Right, so the first option was a hundred thousand dollars would be able to repair the envelope, the roof, the windows, the items that leak, places that leak, and at least slow down the deterioration, as he puts it, seal penetrations, openings, rotted windows, rotted doors. Um, no rotted areas so that you can have some more time to make a decision as to what you would do with the facility.
But with mothballs, that would still leave the lockers open?
Correct, yeah. That would leave the facility to be available. It would just help to slow down the deterioration that exists with.
Just closing the top of it.
Well, essentially, yeah, closing the, the ceiling, the exterior.
Has anybody shown interest in leasing the clubhouse?
I have not heard. We've, we've, um, have not had any interest. No, haven't had anyone.
Hasn't put out any hearings at all.
In fact, so people, um, you know.
Just for, for process, I think it would be better if Tony finishes, unless you have a clarification question, because then we want to make sure we capture questions that might need follow-up. So maybe Tony can complete it and then we can take the next question.
Um, the, um, last thing I want to discuss is our existing debt. Uh, as you, um, as you are probably aware, we've taken on some debt recently, um, for some projects that were definitely necessary, but, um, were added to our debt load somewhat significantly, and that's, um, so we have currently our long-term debt, which is the amount that we actually owe in dollars. As of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen was twenty-eight million dollars, seventy point six million. Uh, that includes the public works facility, firehouse, the recent beach renovation, country club acquisition, um, and a library, still some debt left in the library. And, um, the town also is responsible for its percentage of the Amity School District debt. It's called overlapping debt, and it's very common in the, um, in the, um, financial industry and for municipalities to track that information. So, uh, that's thirteen point three million dollars based on our share of Amity budget. So currently, the town is responsible for a little under forty-two million dollars in long-term debt. That translates each year to our debt service payment of, uh, in the next upcoming budget, our debt service will be two point seven million dollars. And, um, the, uh, our course of Amity debt service for the next fiscal year is one point four or five million, which gives us a total debt service of a little under four point two billion dollars for fiscal year seventeen, uh, based on our, the board's so far recommended budget, about eighty point six percent of the budget. That's sort of a, uh, there are other ways to track that, which, uh, we have gone into in some detail in other presentations, but this is a, a big one that's looked at, and it's ten percent is generally, um, looked at as a sort of, you don't want to really go over ten percent of your budget for your debt service. So you can see, um, we're almost at ninety percent. And, um, so we're, you know, we've, we've had quite a bit of debt lately, and I just wanted to, to frame that for you. Uh, we do have other capital needs in town, and, uh, each year we spend about one point seven million dollars on pageable projects that differs based on the year, some are more, some are less. Some popular ones are some ones that you may see every day is road paving and, um, vehicle purchases, and, uh, those are some, some, uh, some, uh, pretty large ones. Uh, some possible future fundable projects have pageable pay each year in capital, in the operating budget. The, uh, fundable projects are ones that have been identified in the capital budget as potential, um, future projects or have been discussed as a possible future project. So I just wanted to, uh, you can see that we have other projects as well as the country club to, uh, to possibly fund in the future. And lastly, the, uh, the most important thing I want to say is that you never do know everything that you're going to face. And, um, since I've been here, there have been two projects that one had never planned for, one had never had in any, um, spreadsheets or any analysis. One is the country club, of course, the others are fuels built behind it, it'd be a pub work garage. And so, uh, at any point you can get, um, have a process, a project or an expense that you may have to borrow for. And so you always want to leave a little, um, at least my advice would be always leave a little room for that in your calculations so that, um, you know, you're not faced with a situation where you have a, a debt, uh, issue and not a, a space to fund it, so. Thank you, thank you. Sure, yeah.
So if there are questions, please, for the commission members, please, if you could say your name and speak loudly, I think Nancy and who you'll be able to pick it up if people speak loudly but without a microphone? Yes? Okay, Frank, do you have something?
Yeah, a question. Tony, a lot of revenues coming in, in the membership. It, is, are the revenues growing in the membership? Is that growing or is it shrinking? I mean, we're talking about expenses here, but the revenues of the country club towns, I mean, it's...
Being memberships for golf or for the pool.
What, what revenues is, are, is the country club generating? Billy Casper, are they paying or?
So the, um, the memberships, the revenues that are generated from the golf course are, um, are part of our revenue share that we get at the course as well. And, um, the, um, last fiscal year we received, it was about forty-four thousand or so. This year we're getting fifty thousand dollars. So it's increased a little with golf.
But just to be clear, that's not a net number. We have expenses that we still pay in connection with the country club.
Correct.
But, um, we, we do share in golf revenues, only from golf play over a certain amount. But we still need to contribute in the, the agreement with Billy Casper Golf is a certain amount, we subsidize Billy Casper. And their contract ends at the end of two thousand sixteen, and contrary to what some discussion has been, they would not go ahead without continued subsidy for the golf. That, that's very clear. Steve?
Do you have a sense, do they track what number of rounds are from Woodbridge residents versus, sort of, guests and desserts?
Yes, they have actually a lot of information on that. Um, we could certainly get some of that.
I actually know some of it. So, um, what I can tell you, having spoken, I'm a member, and I know people who run it, and I'm in there because I want to see it do well. Question is, is it improving? And the answer that everybody has is it is improving in terms of the amount of money that is being generated, which is why we have fifty thousand dollars this past year versus forty-four the prior year versus something less before that by now.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's improving. The number of, of users, you have different tracking methods, but they were talking about an identification, I believe, in the neighborhood of about two thousand users, if I recall correctly, that can be generated by the O six two five as different users within this particular area.
Two thousand golfers from Woodbridge?
Families that have used, no, what, what did, what did Tommy say? Isn't that what Tommy said?
Well, anyway, I believe, I believe Billy Casper has information about this. I'm not sure if it's Woodbridge or by zip code, but it's a good question, and we'll get that to you. I do want to say that Billy Casper has said to us that part of this year's success, of course, was the weather, and they don't expect it, not that there might not be improvement, but they don't expect it to get any better than it was this year. And I just do want to put out there in the trajectory, all of you realize this, it's one thing for Billy Casper to take a risk on the golf business, and it's something else for the town of Woodbridge. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Phil, we're not, you can, after the meeting, you can tell us your question.
No, I can't say, I have a, I have a question.
I'm sorry, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
First of all, I think it's interesting, um, what exactly does this whole country club, this whole parcel of pool and everything else, cost each individual taxpayer? And the other thing I wanted to say is, yes, the weather was great this part of the year, but if you remember last year, we didn't get started in golf until May, it was, oh, almost May, there was snow on the ground, so it got a very late start. We also lost several of the biggest days, I think Father's Day at Port. So you can't control it. Billy Casper can't control it, the town of Woodbridge can't control it, no one can control it. And the amount of rounds being played, I, I can get you the, the numbers that come out on Monday, but I'll be in California unfortunately. Um, and that, Tommy has all of the numbers that anybody could ever want, and if you call him, he'd be happy to get them to you. But the increase in membership, the increase in membership of Woodbridge families, and the increase in outings, which is a big part of what happens with golf course, has, has risen dramatically. I think when Casper took over, there was like, I believe the first year was twenty-four thousand, and I think they're on target this year to do three hundred thousand in outings.
Yeah, I know there's some very large number of rounds that Billy Casper recorded, I don't pull the number.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand.
It was that much? I, I think it was more than twenty-five, twenty-six.
It was, it was, it was thirty-six.
Obviously, there are some factors we need to get, and, and that's...
I think specifically, I think, you know, how many of our residents are utilizing?
If we can, either, if, if they have that, we'll certainly get it. Um, is somebody, you're getting all these questions on tape, so everything here, okay? Okay. Sammy?
What, what's the revenue from the cell tower?
It's, uh, it's just a few hundred dollars.
We didn't negotiate that down.
No, no, we required.
I just wanted to know what the average cell tower brings in.
I, I don't know what the total cell tower brings in, I just know that we get a very small piece of it.
No, 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 I meant, I, I'm asking, what, if I wanted to build a tower on eight thousand dollars, is that what it is in here? We're, we're one?
We're not getting very much money.
When is that contract from that?
Two thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty?
Yeah.
We've, we've looked at it, so I'm sure it's not even, but, um, Richie?
Yeah, my suggestion was, and, and I know there's talks about money, but taking the clubhouse, okay? Fixing it up, putting recreation in there, putting the senior center in there. This way here, the people in the fire department, they can keep their firehouse, they don't have to build another firehouse, store set in the back. It's a beautiful building, and if you go back to the building apartment, which I went through all the building permits, before they got rid of it, they put a lot of money into it. They put over a couple million dollars. I know it's deteriorating, but it's still a beautiful building, and it's, it should be used, it'll save you from going back and, and the police department, they can use the rest of that building there that the seniors in there. That's my suggestion there. And I don't know where the million dollars, excuse me, that, we never talked about the golf course needing a million dollars. Where did that ever come from, though? That was never discussed at our meeting.
No, it was, it was, um, when we discussed it with Billy Casper, um, not the short-term or, but the longer term, either, you know, what does it look like in terms of, is it, is it, is it a lot more, or just give us a sense of what types of improvements would be needed in the long term?
Right, but I mean, let's put it this way, in our meetings, we never discussed that they needed a million dollars to kick off.
I, I don't think there's been discussion of, not, not to complete this contract, and they said they could, in conversation, go for, probably for a year or two, but in the long term. And I don't think that's come toward the commission. I don't think that, that's the point. Thanks. What's the other?
Can you just clarify in, so in proposal, what was it, D, is the one that?
Describe it, then I'll...
The one that, the one that?
Attached, or, or...
The fifty-five question, that was the smaller amount of units where there was almost a hundred acres of open space. Did that lead the golf course there, or does that remove the golf?
Uh, that one, it would not, you could not have an eighteen-hole golf course, but it could have a nine-hole golf course, and Billy Casper, uh, sorry, Toll would, um, would reconfigure the golf course into nine holes for that same purchase price, as I recall, it was the same price.
The pool would be responsible for the progress on ability to, uh, any tax part of that. As a follow-on to that, I noticed that the two development options were for one and a half acres. Does that mean that there will be no zoning changes required, uh, if those were to be put through?
That's option C was the option that would have no zoning change. That would be, um, one and a half acre zoning, which we have in town now, in that area, and it would be, you know, as if the property just...
Are you restricted to over fifty-five without some type of regulation?
You do that, you would, um, create a special zone through the planning zoning commission. And, um, since you bring up zoning, uh, it would be through planning zoning, and also in this case, since we own the property, through a deed restriction. And, uh, the question has come up frequently, what implications would there be from changing the zoning for over fifty-five? And we have two legal opinions on this, one recently from Conan Wolf, where they do a lot of this zoning work, and, um, they've assured us that if done properly, the, a zoning change to allow cluster over fifty-five housing on the property could be restricted so that a subsequent purchaser could not change the zoning to do something else with it, it would be de-restricted, and also it would not serve as precedent for other parcels in the town. And also, it would not serve as precedent for other parcels in the town. And this letter is available at Town Hall if you want to come get a copy. And also, oh, on that, on that option E that you asked about.
There's one for single family.
Those, it does have, it's for not attached houses, but in a cluster. And, you know, cluster development is looked at favorably, it certainly was in our two thousand five planned cultivation development and our two thousand fifteen, because you maximize open space, you put the houses closing together and you maximize open space. So in that, in that option, we have over a hundred acres left for the town. It could be a nine hole golf course, it could be other recreational activities.
What makes it cluster versus?
Cluster is that, is that instead of having each house on its own one and a half acres, you would have the houses closer together, but then you could also, depending on how you do it, say, so thirty acres are for the houses, but you require another fifty acres adjacent open space or something like that.
Okay, I have a question for Tony in three comments. Tony, the, the sales for the golf, I want to make sure I'm not confused, the E twenty-five number, we get fifty percent over E, is it just a golf revenue, so we don't put in the outings, is that correct? Because I'm like, because I'm hearing they did a million this year, but that may not follow our fiscal year or the contract.
It's a golf revenue, it's a golf related.
Okay, so outing revenue, we don't, we don't see that?
I'm not sure.
We do get it on the golf that goes with the outing, not the food. It's gross golf operations.
So when we show the profit, okay, or the loss, it might be helpful to show the sales over the last six years to see where, I'm most interested in.
Oh, I see, still the golf.
So the other comments are, I mean, I appreciate Rich Krueger's comment about the building and so on and so forth, I think that, and this is as a recreation commission member, I mean, I think until the golf is profitable and the pool is profitable, the pool, and based on your question, Steve, in terms of how many residents are in the pool, the greatest impact in terms of, in terms of negative on the pool membership has really been, because most of the residents are Woodbridge residents and they keep thinking the pool's going away, the golfers are Woodbridge residents, but more diverse, so they, and they do a better job probably on the marketing than we do, but, I don't know, jumping around. The, I think, long term though, Rich, until we got to profitability, there's almost a point, a capital plan in terms of the building, maybe the course and maybe the pool, those are short term, could get ass and mothball, but the long term, you really have to be sure that you're really going to be profitable. But one interesting, and I had picked up on this before, so, Tony, you were going through C, E, and F, and then I guess somewhere along the, we had the seventeen acre acre proposal that was rejected, and then there was a quasi thirty-one acre, which, that was never really, it was just, I guess, contemplating, it's at the seventeen and maybe across the street at Woodfield, on the other side of Button, the Merritt, is that where the thirty-one acres come from? And that, that's not the, that's not E, I know that, that's a different scenario. And what I'm trying to understand here, there was, it seemed like there was a thirty-one acre proposal, which looks like it was the seventeen on one side of Woodfield and maybe additionally coming on the Merritt side, which doesn't touch golf course, and I heard that was, that's thirty-one acres. If the sixty-nine units on E is thirty-six acres, it almost kind of seems to me that there's a thirty-one acre proposal out there that doesn't touch the golf course. I don't know, I'm just, I'm.
I know, I have to look that up, I'm not really sure.
I mean, and one of the, I guess, the comment on that is, I mean, I hear a lot of people, they don't want it to go by, at the same time, we have to pay for it. And if we don't do anything, it's going to be a long time before we are operating at enough of a profit, if we ever get there, to deal with the capital improvements. So I guess part of me, a lot of people don't want any development, but if we're going to save the golf course and the building and everything that goes along with it, I think a little compromise needs to happen in terms of, if the original seventeen acres and if potentially the planet's across the street, I mean, so then you have income, you've got taxes and so on and so forth to use for the capital improvements, so.
But no one has proposed doing a development where the original Toll proposal was, along Woodfield Road. Toll will not do that, and we have no other proposal that, if that's.
So we went back, so what, you know, would you consider the original, the one with across the street?
They said no.
Okay, because that's really the only way you're going to generate enough income to save everything else.
Right, right, so we don't have that on the table.
Can you see that option screen again? Because Bob completely confused.
I'm just curious, do we have data on, you know, we do have a privately operated golf course for revenue that is a taxpayer, and as we continue to improve at Billy Casper Golf, do we, is there a negative impact on the Oakland facility and are we going to be hurting our tax base even more by?
Always impactful, hopefully. I don't go into that.
I'm just curious about their rounds of golf.
You know, it's interesting because, you know, I used to be president of Oakland, so having been over there a few times and talked with them, they're running a little different model. Their model is at golfnow.com, so it's very different than actually asking for members to be part of a, you know, situation like for this golf club. So they seem to do quite well because they price it according to the market. So if you talk with people who play, A, there's a lot of rounds, I don't know exactly the number, and B, they take a long time, but they actually made improvements at that golf course. So it seems like they're doing pretty well. And of course, remember the purchase price for them is very different than what our purchase price is. Can I just ask a question, tell me if I'm wrong on this count? So if you took the open space and you just put it over here because it's open space, and there was a number associated with that, which is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the current term interest. That's what it's costing, so that's, that's real money. And then you, you took from that, the total, took that from the total, it looked as if that was about two hundred and seventy thousand or so.
Right.
And so I thought we had twenty-five hundred households. I'm just trying to get this straight in my mind. Is that fairly accurate?
It's thirty-five.
Three thousand, so basically, so, so to run the deficit that is the pool and the golf course going forward with reasonable certainty based upon your numbers, it's a hundred dollars per family per year. I just want to see if that's.
Not including the debt, sir, that's in.
No, but what I'm saying, if it's open space, no matter what you hear, unless you sell it, and, you know, what I'm hearing a lot of what's in town is, we would like to keep the open space. So I'm trying to get that component piece off and say, operationally, you know, if you've got no other income coming in, no other sale, no other development, right now going forward for the next year or so, a projection of about a hundred dollars per household is not a lot of.
I think we have to check that, but what is, what, that doesn't take into account, and one of the issues with this property is the cost to maintain it. And this, this is an aging infrastructure that was not well maintained for a long time, so that's one of the, one of the issues. We can count the questions, and then the golf course, the irrigation system and to keep the golf course going, as Billy Casper said, they think they can manage for a year or two, but then costs are.
Well, I think it's a good number of them as to what that is, because I think that will be very helpful.
Sure.
Elia Alexiades from the Fire Commission. So I have a question about all these different options, and this is what I want to know, is which ones are on the table right now? I mean, obviously, D and F, sell it all, we don't have a proposal for, and F, open space, that would be if we closed it, closed up shop and just, let the whole place go to seed as open space, but in terms of A, B, C, and E, which are listed as proposals by Toll, are those all active proposals?
Well, C and E are really the only ones. A was that first proposal for seven and a half million dollars that the Board of Selectmen came to consensus, we didn't take a vote, but felt that it was just too many units that the town would not want, a hundred and seventy units. So that one is certainly in advance. The second one, likewise, I think people felt it was too many units, this was a request from one of the selectmen, but nobody was really interested in following that up. D was another request from the selectmen, but Toll was not willing to do that. So it's not, no, and we haven't heard from anybody else. So the only ones that are out there for consideration at this time are C, E, and F, or variations on F. You know, we can, we can have different open space assumptions. This was just to get something that we could start talking about.
So the hundred for B, that was never proposed, Toll?
Nobody really, well, Toll did give us numbers on it.
On the hundred?
On the hundred, and we could revisit that, it just hasn't really been talked about. We were trying to get the number of units now, because if there was going to be development, people are very concerned about the extent of it. And we started by looking what, how many units could be built on the property, what's the maximum number if you kept the zoning, you didn't make the zoning change? So the first estimate we got was sixty-nine, I'm not sure that's the right number, but Toll did not want to build sixty-nine individual high-end homes, they were willing to look at fifty-one high-end homes. So then we said, well, if you take that same number and you make it active adult and again, it's an active adult detached, it could be mixed with some attached so that some would be less expensive, it doesn't have to be that exact number. But that proposal leaves a hundred and twenty acres of town land for open space, for recreational use, or for, you know.
Would C not be age restricted?
C is not be restricted. C is, you know, what I imagine would be regular McMansions with children in school, you know, no change to zoning.
Right, but just so we understand, A and B, those seven, seven and a half million and four million for, is cash paid at closing going directly to the debt? Correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
I mean, A would.
Would have taken care of the debt.
And left us millions of dollars.
And as part of the proposal, I believe, Toll had also said that included in that, they would demolish the country club.
Well, they, they said they would take a million dollars off, for a million dollars.
They would take for a million dollars regardless of what it costs them, because you do have issues with remediation if there's asbestos, if there's anything else in there, and they agreed that they would bear that cost. If it ended up being more, they would bear that cost.
That's right, well, yes, they said they would demolish the building, take the risk of any environmental hazard, they would refurbish the pool and the tennis courts and the parking lot, and build a new pool house, a small pool house. But again, that's, that's a hundred and seventy units and more than you think that was, that the town would want. That Toll's offer to reduce their price and do those other things do apply, I believe, in C and E also. And as you mentioned, one of the things about the Toll proposals is that they would pay the full cash amount on closing, not as they build the units, not as they're sold.
So I guess, you're talking about, when you said C and E, that doesn't, those numbers would not include, or wouldn't include demolition of the building?
Those numbers would be reduced.
So that doesn't include that, so that would just be the building, building the houses, and then a reconfiguration of the, of the property if, if the town decided that they wanted a nine-hole course, or they wanted to have it open space, that would include them taking out sidewalks and things like that, right? It would just reconfigure.
They would do their own sidewalks and roads within their development. Yeah, these are the numbers that Toll has put forward. We have not negotiated anything with them because everything is in such a state of flux, and we're doing a lot of public speaking about it, so I don't know how much negotiating ultimately there would be, but again, these are the numbers that they.
Right, I just think it's important to know that the other options, aside from A and B, we would have to also take into account, B would probably have to spend the money to demolish the building.
Yes, if we.
Or to fix the building, and at this point, it looks like the same number, close to it. And even if you go with the original design to mothball it, you know, I think that, it is in dangerous territory because you, that building's not ABA compliant, and the elevator is not up to par, breaks down quite often from what I understand, and you'd have to do a lot of work to allow people to go into that building. Because the town would have a huge liability if anybody happened to wander up the stairs and blew that building, because the upstairs, and, you know, they did spend millions of dollars, but I think those millions of dollars were spent in the locker rooms. There was nobody spent upstairs, and the upstairs is a complete disaster.
I was in there probably a couple of months ago, I didn't look at that to me.
Yeah.
The fire marshal has made it off limits.
It's bad, it's bad, I mean, it's just rotting from the inside, and those windows are overlooked, the putting green, the whole frame goes into salt, rotting the inside through, and it's bad. And a hundred thousand dollars, basically be to, to close up the upstairs, and I think using that building at all would be dangerous. I think it'd be a huge liability for the town considering the condition of the others.
So your approach is to tear it down, I think, yeah?
Well, again, there are different opinions about what to do, we're going to try to see if there are other questions there, Jeff.
Yeah, was there ever an action discussed to promote the golf and pool operations? Was there ever an action discussed to promote the golf and pool operations?
I think promoting the pool operations has been an ongoing discussion with, yes, actually with recreation and on golf with Billy Casper.
Can I hear a second? So one of the things that, I mean, I probably commented earlier about the renegotiated contract, there was some fallout from that renegotiation, part of that was, our pool director really became the business manager of the pool, and he picked up a lot of hats when that happened. And one of the things that we've learned, one of the hats that hit the ground was really the marketing, but no fault of his, I mean, basically, his primary marketing was emailing existing members and putting sandwich signs out. In the, most recently, so I've actually personally met with Geek Hotch and Tommy Miller, and also with Anthony Patti and Tommy Miller, and to go through, Casper taking responsibility for running the marketing, basically us doing what we can to support it, but, and because they recognize, look, if the pool doesn't survive or doesn't operate, there's some negative consequences for them in terms of animals that are being operative, there being food and a number of things, so synergistically, we're trying to work together because all the amenities operating at the same time make it more successful. And one of the frustrations that we've had, because we jumped into it really two years ago from a recreational standpoint, is, in the two years we've operated, and what we did know is year before, the tennis had closed or wasn't operating during that season, we lost twenty-three members our first year out of the gate because we didn't have tennis. We now know going into this year, tennis has to be open and be ready and displayed at the open house, not by July first, and so that's one of the things.
Because Billy Casper Golf offered to market the pool, didn't they?
Yes, that's, and that's what.
Yeah, we talked about that more.
Yep, and also too, it was mentioned about the future of the golf operations, so I know they had two hundred and ten outings this past year with a ninety-seven percent retention rate for this year. So, I mean, there's business coming back, it's huge. And also too, I don't know if people here know, but Billy Casper Golf has a hundred and sixty-two properties across the nation, and they were voted most improved golf course this past year, and also superintendent of the year was to.
At Woodbridge?
Yep. So Billy Casper Golf is a national organization, they have a hundred and sixty-two properties across the United States, and Woodbridge Country Club got voted the most improved golf course out of all those properties, and they also got voted superintendent of the year for that. And also, Woodbridge Country Club was mentioned in Golf Digest in the whole article about Woodbridge Country Club this year, December, 2015.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go to O V S?
What does option E do to golf? Does that leave, I mean, assuming that leaves an option of whether it's golf or open space, but.
Option nine hole, nine hole golf course, it can't be eighteen, but it could be a nine-hole golf course.
I had another comment, was that what you said about the zoning opinion is very important, very important, because I took the time to read the opinion, and it's a very strong opinion with a lot of analysis, with the case law and precedent, and why that's important is because I read a letter in the paper this week from a member of the Board of Selectmen full of scare tactics and how this, how changing the zoning here would have precedential value and we'd end up with high rises and strip malls in the center of town, and this is not true. I mean, the, the opinion letter that we have is very important, and it's important that we, that we focus on facts and law and evaluate these things on the, on the merits, and the financial analysis and all of the merits that have been discussed here, not, not scare tactics.
Yeah, I think the issue is controversial enough, even when we agree on facts, so I think it's very important that we stay with the facts. I know there have been people who have said to me they're concerned that if we change the zoning in any way, that their neighbors can build condominiums on their one and a half acre lot in town. So, I mean, it's just like people thinking that the Board of Selectmen is selling the property at a meeting. So it's really, really important to know the facts, help us as ambassadors to get the facts out, and again, we'll follow up on the questions you've asked, if there's other information, please contact Toll or Betsy or me, and we'll follow up with it. Just as I finish this thought, we'll take more questions, and once we've done that, we will hold public forums so that we can have these conversations with the residents, you amongst them who will ultimately make the decision.
Has a decision been made whether or not to run the golf course and the pool this upcoming season, and if not, what's going to be the deadline to decide that?
Yeah, well, the golf is definitely going on, the contract expires in December, so golf is definitely. The pool, the, where we are in the budget process, the Board of Selectmen voted this week on a recommended budget to the Board of Finance, that's our usual process, we included the pool in that recommendation. We also brought up an alternative for the pool, which is, which is a, a big idea, very complex, and I don't know if we can carry it out, but we are looking into the possibility of making the pool free to residents for this summer. But one way or the other, I think I can say the Board of Selectmen is, has recommended that the pool continue, and it's up to the Board of Finance in the end what they do with the budget, but usually they would give that heavy look.
So picking up on what was said, and that's very accurate as to what the perception is in the community of the open space that's now being run as a golf course, in terms of lots of people just outside of the town. And the only thing that the town residents may get if you belong to the club is a little bit on the, on the cost, okay, but not, there's not much. And the people, there's a lot of people from outside of town who come and use the course, and all of that is irrespective of the condition of the clubhouse. Except for the fact that there's locker rooms, most people don't even use them as nicely kept as they are, as expensive as they were. And I believe that the conversations, and you can confirm this, but I think everybody should know, that the Billy Casper Golf doesn't feel that there's a necessity of having that clubhouse there in its present form in order to be able to properly run the operation.
I think that's correct.
That's correct.
And I, I think they actually feel that way about the pool as well. I know there's some difference, we can check that again, but I, I don't think the, the pool or the clubhouse are what they really want to...
So the point was, although there's synergies that are very necessary between pool and golf course operations, et cetera, it's beyond that in terms of, you have a building there, okay, so if it's knock it down, mothball it, or whatever, you know, the other alternatives that weren't there, of course, I privately talked about this with a number of people, winning yourself, and I, which was mentioned by you, Rich, which is another use of that building. There's plenty of other options, I'm reading the letters to the editor, a lot of them were brought up in those letters to the editor. I think we've got to be creative, this is where you show leadership, okay? You or whoever happens to be there, where you've got an opportunity to have a well-thought-out open space operation, and now you've got a building. And it's not about just the cost of that building as it exists, it's can you redo that building? There's plenty of ways you could redo that building, for lots of different activities. And I think this is where the rubber meets the road. You've got to go out there and creatively develop those options. One of them was what you said, may not be the only one.
Yeah. Just the open space option, having started on Recreation and gone through some of the challenges of looking at properties and places, fortunately after the most recent town plan, and then also meeting with COOPOP and Conservation, I think we have an understanding as to where we're going to go in terms of prioritizing where things are going to be developed and what. And actually, the Country Club has kind of put the whole discussion about this field, that field that can be developed, really kind of on hold, because there's this huge 150 acre, 55 acre property that potentially could serve a number of those needs. I guess the only concern they have is, I know that sometimes what happens is when the town purchases a property, it somehow moves from what it's intended to be purchased for, whether it's to be for recreational days. When Fitzgerald was purchased, it was basically for whatever municipal use was needed to be used it for, at this point, the perception for the Fitzgerald property is really is it's pretty much, it's a walking trail, it's cornfield, and that's what it's going to be other than the firehouse that it's built. If we did move forward and actually it became open space, I would hope from a recreational standpoint, if we look at our list of things we'd like to see developed, that those items get, you know, fairly high priority, not just, well, okay, we're going to let grass grow and, and, you know, and that's going to be the end of it, so.
Well, you know, looking at different interests, I think really one of the advantages of option C is that we could really bring together many diverse interests, because we bring in some, we bring in purchase money as well as ongoing revenues, still have 120 acres for whatever uses the town would decide, and as I said, it could be walking trails, bike trails, a nine-hole golf course, maybe some combination, it could be an ice skating rink, and other recreational activities. The town would be retaining 120 acres of open space, and I, I don't know what Al, if Al used it saying open space, you know, many people don't consider Country Club open space. This was not an open space acquisition, we didn't use open space funds, it was never on any list of potential open space options. It's obviously, it doesn't have many buildings on it, but there's some controversy about that, so. Okay, well, thank you all. All right, two more, Jeff?
Yep, just a question for Tony, for that $40,000 capital improvement, do you know any items of that?
The, what's with the $400,000 from the City Development Commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually in our, I don't have a key, but it's in our capital budget, and if you can give me information of the capital percentage.
Well, actually, no, I don't have any, because I actually hook three down.
Oh, okay.
And they say that's just wish lists, it's not a hard cost. It was if we had to hard launch or a credit card, it was a good thing to put together. And also, Tony, golf, at this point, the first time I'm hearing is $1 million, is tonight, never heard of $1 million for a hard cost for, they want a country club commission for golf.
I just wanted to follow up on your, your comment about the worst luck in considering opening the pool for free to town residents instead of charging memberships. And I think that's a great idea, that we can all get something for what we're paying for, rather than the, the minimal amount of declining revenues from pool membership, you know?
I got, I got to make a comment.
I think, I think we're not going to get into a discussion, it's a, it's a complex proposal, and...
You want to golf out of this?
The Board of Selectmen is having a special meeting to follow up on it, and I just want to thank all of you so much for taking the time to come out, and we'll follow up on all the questions if you have others, or you think they're not there.